Okay, I guess we'll get started. I'd like to call this meeting to order February 25th, 2021. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice that this meeting was advertised as Rep. Park Press and the Beacon on Thursday, February 18th, 2021, and by posting a notice in Fort Corrida Post Office and on Oklahoma Harbor Post Office by filing a copy of notice with Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Mr. George, have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Peters.
Present.
Mrs. De Senza.
Present.
Mrs. Downing.
Present.
Mr. Polino.
Present.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. George. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Clark.
Hey, thank you for Vice President, Mr. Polino. Can everybody hear me? Just, yeah, okay, good. So, welcome to our second board retreat. I'm very happy to say that. Tonight, we have a few presentations. We are going to start with a mid-year update of our Board of Education goals. And then with us this evening, we have Kathy Weinkopf, who is our New Jersey School Boards Association Field Rep. Representative. And I'm not going to steal Kathy's thunder. She's going to go through her presentation. Then we're going to have a presentation on board member role in negotiations. Mr. George is going to do that. Mr. Decker is going to co-present with me on the mid-year update. And then we'll end tonight's presentations with a budget workshop. So at this time, I am going to share my screen. So if you just give me a moment. And because I'm not going to be able to see, Mr. George, if you could just tell me when it is that you can see my screen.
I can see it.
Excellent. Okay, I'm going to put this in present mode. Okay, fantastic. All right. So again, welcome to our board retreat. As I mentioned, this is our second board retreat, and our presenters tonight are going to be myself, Mr. Decker, Mr. George, and Mrs. Weinkopf. And I do want to say welcome to our board members who are all listed there. Board President McAvoy, Board Vice President Polino, Mrs. Downing, Mrs. De Senza, Mr. Peters, Mr. Scanlon, and Mrs. Claus. All right, and I kind of touched upon our agenda, and it was, our agenda was posted. These are the topics that we're going to talk about today, and I am going to jump right into it. So as I talked, as I mentioned, our Board of Education goals are posted on our website, and they are based on the professional standards for educational leaders. And there are six, and they are mission, vision, and core values, governance, ethics, and professional norms, operations, and management, standard force curriculum, instruction, and school improvement, standard five is community of care, equity, and family engagement, and standard six is professional capacity, community of school district personnel. So I'm just going to briefly share. We're going to go through them, but I wanted to point out that this is what, if somebody wanted to go to our website, these goals are posted there because they were board-approved early in the school year. And we have five goals under curriculum and instruction, one goal under finance, and one goal under facilities. And again, we're going to talk a little bit more in-depth about those goals. All right, so let's start with the first one, which is under curriculum and instruction, and the goal is to continue the process for the development of a new five-year strategic plan. So let me talk a little bit about where we started, and I've talked about this at board meetings, and so I'm going to reiterate that back on October 1st, 2019, which does seem like eons ago, we did have our community kickoff, and it was very well-attended by both our community and our board members. What followed was our strategic planning weekend. That took place on Friday, March 6th, and Saturday, March 7th. And shortly thereafter, we got hit with the pandemic, and schools unfortunately closed, and you all know the rest of that story. So where did we go after that? Actually, let me, let me backtrack for a moment. That weekend, we accomplished a great deal of work, and it was good work. We completed our mission statement. We set our goal areas. And that is, that is what led us to where we went. So we developed, like I said, the strategic plan goal areas and our mission statement, and our three goal areas are learner success, finance, and facilities, and outreach, and engagement. And so the question then becomes, where are we right now? And so where we are is what would, what should have happened in March of 21 is we were supposed to have developed our action teams for each goal area. That was supposed to have taken place on March 23rd, and again, interrupted by the pandemic. So what happened is Kathy Weinkopf, and Pat, and Steve, and I sat down, and, and like many other districts, and this wasn't, you know, it was applicable to many districts, not just us. It wasn't a one, it was not an anomaly. But we, on January 19th, did in fact have our action team training, virtually, of course. And we had that training with all of the participants that make up our action teams, and Kathy Weinkopf did that training. And so the, the purpose, the job of the action teams is to develop those action plans, and the action plans will specify who is responsible for the action plan, the items in the action plan, I should say, the resources to be deployed, the due dates for when those action plans need to be completed, the criteria that is going to be used to determine whether the action steps were met or not, and the timelines over this five-year period, because our strategic plan is a five-year plan. So the end result is to complete the actual strategic plan and have a presentation to the board at a public meeting in June of 2021, and that's our target date. And I can definitely tell you that we are on target. Our action teams have been meeting. We've had one, two meetings so far for my, my committee, and I know, Mr. George, you've had several, as did you, Mr. Decker. So we are moving right along and making great progress. All right, I'm going to transition to goal number two, again, under curriculum and instructions, and that was to develop and implement, implement a parent university program for community outreach. And that was to engage the school community in a variety of topics, including budget, the loss of state aid, special education, school reopening, remote learning, which falls under the challenges posed by the pandemic. And I'm happy to tell you that on February 1st, we, 4th, excuse me, we held our first one. And it was titled "Navigating Remote Instruction: Starting the Third Marketing Period Strong." We had over 100 participants join us, and the feedback has been tremendous. So we're hard at work on our next parent university, and that is going to focus on special education. And then future parent university sessions are going to focus on the NWEA MAP Growth Assessments, MAP standing for Measures of Academic Progress. And then we are going to be doing a session on strategies for keeping our students safe on social media. So we'll be sending out some information, automated calls and information on our website about those sessions. And hopefully eventually get to where we can do them in person, but I think we're all looking forward to that. Okay, so our third goal, again, under curriculum, excuse me, and instruction, is successful implementation of a new mentor coaching program for at-risk students. And so I am happy to tell you that we have established a partnership between the Lacey Township School District and the New Jersey Big Brothers Big Sisters of Coastal New Jersey, which is that really long acronym that you see there on the middle of the page. So we kicked off our very first introductory session on January 19th. And just recently, Big Brothers Big Sisters released this excellent press release. There's more to it. I just grabbed a snippet, but the actual press release is posted on our website. And I don't like to read off of slides typically, but I think that this quote is just so true and so informative. And it reads, "In the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, Lacey Township School District is partnering with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Coastal and Northern New Jersey to deliver a new virtual mentoring program for local students. The district recognized that youth are facing added stress, increased isolation and depression, and they reached out to Big Brothers Big Sisters for assistance, addressing the urgent need for kids to socialize, build friendships, and support one another. The new Big Brothers Big Sisters School-Based Mentoring Program facilitates connection and includes Lacey Township High School students serving as mentors to Mill Pond Elementary School students." And so there are 30 students participating. So the mentors are the, are the bigs, and the littles are the mentees. And we're meeting every other Tuesday. And I've participated in several of the sessions as have Mrs. Memeck, the principal at Mill Pond, and the principal at the high school, Mr. Greg Brandis. And I'm so happy about this program, and I'm really, excuse me, looking forward to expanding it. And again, getting to the point where we can do this in person, because virtual is good and all, but nothing beats doing in-person meetings. Okay, and then under curriculum and instruction goals, we have two more. Goal number four is related to student achievement. And goal number five is related to initiatives that we had to put in place to support teachers in the hybrid remote learning environment that we have found ourselves in. I'm going to turn the presentation over at this point to Mr. Decker. And I'm just going to click here.
Hello, everybody. So this part of the presentation will focus on instruction, which is really what we're, we're all here for, is to teach children and to educate them to be good, successful, productive members of society. So under the instruction, under slide two, there are some goals that we had selected. For example, during this year, we wanted to use data points to target instruction activities. Now, again, this is all, as you are all aware, this is very difficult under the circumstances that we functioned under during this year. But I have to give absolute credit to the teachers and the administrators for working so hard to implement all of the things that we're focused on. So we are looking at using data points. We put a score of 33 percentile in the NWEA that would be considered as an at-risk student. And those students who were identified would receive instructional intervention strategies that would be planned out to increase their achievement in a particular area, such as language arts or math. Teachers during the year would review tests and the data with the principal and supervisors, our building supervisors with our district-level supervisor during first-grade level meetings during the year in the beginning. And they would plan to refine instruction for their at-risk students, including tiered instruction. Now, during our hybrid model, there were times, at the end of the day, that teachers were able to pull groups, smaller groups of students in a hybrid model, whether it be in-person or online instruction. Teachers also, and administrators also analyzed student data in reading, writing curriculum, and they use that data to guide instruction for those small groups and monitor the gains of students' academic progress throughout the year. This was done through, and has continued to be done through, the NWEA assessment, district assessments, and reading level scores. As you may be aware, the governor did request for a suspension this year of the NJSLA test. I guess we're still waiting for the federal government to grant that request or not. We did not take the NJSLA last year, and Governor Murphy requested that we didn't take it this year as well. So we're still waiting for that. Another thing that we did was continue to look at the DRA, the Developmental Reading Assessment. So if Dr. Clark could click on that conferring menu. Last year, I developed a conferring menu. Now, just to explain this, sometimes the DRA levels are numbered, right? One, two would be extremely low grades, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, going up in the numbers. A lot of times, teachers have difficulty understanding what students need to do specifically to get them to the next reading level. There's certain specific goals that children have to master or demonstrate to go up a reading level. So if Dr. Clark could just scroll down for a moment, you could see, keep going, keep all the way going. The highlighted areas here, all the highlighted areas are things that tell a teacher what a student needs to do for that specific area that is an increase of the prior area. So it's a guide for teachers. It helps them understand what they need to target to teach, to get children to a greater reading level. And we all know, as educators, that reading literacy is the most important foundational skill to have. If you can't read, everything else is extremely difficult. And that goes into social studies, science, mathematics, word problems, everything. It all centers on language arts and literacy. So we do have a great focus on language arts and literacy. And to be quite honest, we're going to continue that focus next year as well. It's not just something you do for a year and say, oh, we focused on language arts, and we're done with that. It never, it never ends. So we can go on. Dr. Clark, we can go back to the presentation. So I'm going to talk about briefly the NWEA. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. The norm-referenced assessment. Well, what is that? Because some people may not understand what that means. Well, the NWEA norm-reference assessment, it's something that the company put together, and it studies results that are based on kindergarten to 10th grade levels, samples across the country. And they record between 3.6 and 5.5 million test scores from approximately 500,000 to 700,000 students attending 24,000 public schools in 58 districts across the United States. So Dr. Clark mentioned the MAP scores earlier. Excuse me. So these MAP scores, the calculations are used to create growth norms, and they're used to ensure this year their growth norms were a representate, a representation of the United States and the student-school population for any particular grade level, because students are assessed on grade level. So if we can go to the next slide. So once students take these scores, they receive something called a RIT score. So when students finish their MAP growth test, they receive a number called a RIT score in each area tested. This score represents a student's achievement level at any given moment and provides a measurement of their academic level to a comparative norm. So let me just explain that for a moment. So at any time during the school year, these students could take that test, and it could demonstrate where they are compared to other students in the country on their grade level. So that's the norm. It's a comparative norm. And the calculations that go into that provide a level, a normative level. And then we could see how our students are performing comparative to other students in similar grade levels across the country. So it is a norm-reference test. It is not a criterion-reference test, and I'll speak about that in a moment. So if we can go to the next slide. So the goal is to increase our NWEA MAP assessment scores in these particular areas. Unfortunately, we don't have the data yet because we haven't taken the spring assessments to see where our scores went and if they've increased. But we can take a look at our scores as a district and compare them to the normative scores comparatively through the country. So here, you can see, we're going to start with kindergarten, first, and second grade to the left. The middle column in red, this is the beginning of the year. This is the normative data. So this is the normative score for that grade level across the country out of all those tests that were taken that I spoke of earlier. And all the way to the right, it shows the reading scores for the fall of the Lacey students. Okay, so that's our scores for our students in Lacey. Now, you could see that comparatively to the norm-referenced score, our students are doing pretty good. They're either very close to the norm, or they are multiple points above the norm. Sometimes you can have a score like second grade where you could see it's 172.3. Our score was 175. We are higher than the norm, which is good. But that percentage of increase above the norm doesn't really create a significant statistical difference. Okay, so we're, we're doing well. We're right in there with the rest of the country. Our students are performing well. So if we can go to the next slide, we could take a look at our scores through grades three through nine. Now, this is language arts, so we're going to look at reading right now. As you could see, our scores three through nine, third grade, we are above the, the norm. Fourth grade, we are above the norm. Fifth grade, we're above the norm. Sixth grade, above the norm. Seventh grade, we are below the norm by two points. But again, as I mentioned a moment ago, that doesn't necessarily mean a lot. I mean, we're kind of right with everybody else. It's not a statistical significant difference. It would have to be, at least to me, at least seven degrees or more to be some sort of difference statistically. If we look at our grade eight and nine, again, we are above the norm. Now, if you look at grade nine, that is getting into a statistical significant difference because it's a, you know, that's a pretty nice increase. If we can go to the next slide. So this is language arts in grades three through eight. And you could see here, I put everything in blue if it's above the normative score for the rest of the country. And we are. So our students are performing quite well, given the fact that last year, we went into a hybrid model of instruction. And basically, you know, in the middle of the year, it was very difficult, and nobody's ever done that before. So I have to give a lot of credit to our students for continuing to achieve, because based on these scores, they are still performing. If we go to the next slide, this is mathematics, so we will continue here to the next slide. Again, I took grades one, K1, 2. You could see that comparatively to the norm-reference test, we are either above the norm. Kindergarten is doing very well above the norm, actually, which is nice. And everybody else is worse statistically right there with the rest of the country. If we can go to the next slide, please. Grades three through nine. You could see grades three, four, five, we're doing well. Grade six, seven, eight, we are below the, the norm. But again, it's not statistical significant. So in my opinion, based on these numbers, we're right there. And ninth grade as well, we are doing, doing a good job. If we can go to the next slide, which is interesting, because this is 10th and 11th grade. The 10th, this year was going to be the first year that we would take the NWEA MAP test for 10th grade. We historically normally didn't do that. We put that in the budget last year to do that. But with everything that was going on with COVID, we had to hold off on that. But we're, we're, we are going to implement that next year, because I think that's an important data point for us to look at, especially in a transitional grade when you're going from, it, it's just an important grade. So when we look at the next slide, we can see how our students in 10th and 11th grade are doing in the PSAT scores. And I'm happy to say that if you take a look at 10th grade in 2019, you could see MET, the ERW, that's the Evidence-Based Reading and Writing Benchmark. Okay, which was for mathematics. It was 460, and for, I'm sorry, for language arts, it was 460, and for math, it was 510. You could see that in 2019, 51% of our 10th graders were meeting that benchmark standard for, for that, for language arts. And this year, 64% students met that benchmark standard. So that was a statistically significant increase. That's, that's a 13-point increase. That's, that's, that's wonderful. If you look at the math, we kind of, we didn't increase. We stayed. We stayed flat. So would we like to see that number grow? Absolutely. But I'm happy with everything that's been going on. Instructionally, that that number did not decrease, but we're going to focus on increasing that number. If you look at 11th grade, 2019, 53% of our students scored in the Evidence-Based Reading and Writing. 53% met the benchmark, but this year, 2020, 66% met. That's a 13% increase. That's, it's great. In the mathematics, 11th grade, we had a 4% increase. So that's good. We had an increase. So we did very well. Our students did very well in 10th and 11th grade on the PSAT scores. We do not have SAT scores currently because they haven't been, they haven't taken them yet. So when we get that information, we will pass it on. So we can continue to go five, and what the district has done over the past year, what we looked at doing this year. If you can go to the next slide, please. With regard to develop initiatives that would support teaching in a hybrid and remote learning model, what were our expectations for students, regardless of whether they attended in person or remotely? I'm happy to know that we are going to bring students back. It's so important for kids to get back into the classroom. Nothing, nothing replaces in-person learning. It just doesn't. The number-one factor in a student's success studies continually show is the teacher. So you can have a great curriculum, and you could be on the computer. So you can have a great curriculum and you could be on the computer. But if you, you, you don't have that relationship with that teacher, it's very difficult. So I'm happy to see that. I think it's going to make a huge difference for our students. And our, and our. Our teachers and our families. Very excited. So if we can go to the next slide, I could talk about some of the things that we have done, some of the things that we're doing. Many of you know, we implemented the virtual. Asynchronous learning model that was implemented five through twelve. We implemented a hybrid virtual learning model and K to four. Video modeling for teachers on the implementation of virtual lessons. We created. A, a model video. Of what teachers were expected to do for these types of lessons and how to plan for these types of lessons. And I want to thank the supervisors. That worked with me to put that together. They did a great job. I think it was very beneficial for teachers. In our district. We purchased Chromebooks for one-to-one use in elementary. That's in the motions. We did that a while ago. It's been taking quite some time, as you know. None of which is really our fault. It's just. Systemic to the problem that's going on in the world. Implementation of video cameras in classrooms for the asynchronous learning. We're going to do that for elementary as well. So we've been putting cameras in there so that students can begin to, to. Join classrooms on that level, just like the high school did. We installed webcams in classrooms and desktops for the high school people and. Adjusted sound settings. The tech department has done a great job in getting out there and. Providing teachers and families actually with, with support. Scheduled preparation time for teachers to create virtual lessons so that they were able to accommodate. The various needs that students and families had. As you know. If you have to plan for in-person learning. You also have to plan for hybrid learning, which is online. So it creates a double plan. And we provided. Teachers with some time to be able to do that. They did a wonderful job. It's a lot of work. It's not just our teachers, but every teacher in the state has been challenged by this type of. Additional planning. For additional long-term substitutes, we brought on to provide support. For elementary students and to help those families that need extra support. We prepared Chromebooks and laptops for K to eight schools for them to use them at home when, when this first began. And the distribution of that, if we can go to the next slide, please. Coordinated those student pickups and drop-offs with students and parents. And also, you know, sometimes people don't think about this, but. Technical devices sometimes break down or a button falls off the, you know, the Chromebook. They need to be fixed. So the tech department, we had to work on. Developing a system for those Chromebooks to be dropped off, to be repaired and to be picked back up. The tech department has done a great job in providing those services for our students and families as well as. Identifying and helping students that needed hotspots for additional internet access. So they could continue with online learning. In addition, create and maintain relevant professional development opportunities for staff, virtual Google Classroom and Canvas Professional Development. A page for staff. That they're kept up to date with relevant material and how to and examples of work. Created a process to manage and allow the students to keep Chromebooks over the summer, if you recall, and to minimize contact and contamination, which. Was extremely important at that time and to this day. And currently we're planning to double the bandwidth at the high school campus and the internet connection. And that's scheduled to take place. That will give us an increased bandwidth. Because. We're using so much. Technological devices with video and audio now. It's a tremendous increase. From the past. So we need to be prepared for the future as well. If there's one thing that this. Pandemic has taught us. Is to be prepared for the unexpected and to be prepared for things that we may have never done before. So as we work together as an administrative team. In the central office. Whether it be finance. Facilities. Instruction. And when we work with our district administrators, we are thinking of how can we use the experiences. From this particular situation and pandemic. And to make them positive and proactive so that we can learn from this. And make our school system better and stronger. And provide the best education for the students of Lacey Township. So that's a brief overview of things we've done and. Where we're headed with instruction. So I want to thank you for your time in listening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Decker. And I should be able to. Get back to our presentation. Okay. All right. Mr. George, can you just let me know if you can hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Fantastic. Okay. All right. So that. Covers our curriculum and instruction goals one through five. We will be doing another student achievement presentation at the beginning of the next school year. And perhaps we may even do one toward the end of the school year, depending on where we are. With our assessments, we know that we are going to be administering the spring N W E A. State of New Jersey has just completed a waiver. To extend or. Delay the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. And so we're waiting to see where that all goes. So more to come. So thank you, Mr. Decker for that presentation. So our next slide is related to finance and that is to enhance the district's tuition-based program to attract additional non-resident students. So what do we mean by that? Policy five, one, one, one is a very long policy. We've talked about it quite a few times, but there is a. Section in policy five, one, one, one. That says, quote, "Other non-resident students otherwise eligible for attendance may be admitted. To the Lacey Township School District with payment of tuition and board approval." And we have talked for some time about how to enhance. This program because it certainly would serve as a source of revenue. And one of the things that we talked about. Was developing a video. That. Could be used as a public service announcement, if you will, on why students who are perhaps non-resident would want. To attend Lacey Township High School. So I'm going to play a three-minute video. It's an older video that was developed by Mr. Merman and our television crew and some former students. Well, they were our students when this video was done. And the other thing that you're going to notice is that was definitely, definitely pre-COVID. Sharing the video with you tonight because I just wanted to give you. An example of what we're planning for the future. So hopefully you'll be able to hear it. All right, Mr. George, were you able to hear that?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay.
Hi, I'm Jess and welcome to Lacey Township High School.
And I'm Zane. We're going to show you around the school today.
We have block scheduling here, meaning instead of having eight classes crammed into one day, we have four and then four in the next. They alternate. One's named Navy and one's named Cardinal and after our school colors.
My day starts off with STEM class. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. In these classes, there's a large focus on these topics and hands-on labs.
Today, my day starts off with forensic science. We have tons more options, including chemistry, physics, biology, marine biology, anatomy, and so much more.
Now I'm off to my history class. We have lots of options here. U S one, U S two, sports and society, Holocaust studies, and history through film, just to name a few. And if you're really into history, you can look into what's called the OCC Academy.
Lacey offers a dual enrollment program in which you can take classes at Ocean County College while still in high school. Talk about a head start.
The OCC Academy is essentially a way for students, starting as their junior year, to become full-time Ocean County College students and take a full OCC course load to get their liberal arts degree. Essentially the same time they graduate Lacey High School. It gives the students another pathway, not just academically for a high school route, similar to our STEM Academy. Or our brand new Humanities Academy, but also allows students to explore what college is like now.
Students here take foreign language classes. We have German, French, Spanish, all the way up to AP level courses and linguistics too.
Javoya la playa.
Foreign languages aren't the only electives you could take. We have a wide variety of other classes here. I take culinary arts.
I take digital photography.
We both do telecom. And our friends take.
Woodshop.
Acting.
Digital publications.
Fashion design.
Concert band.
Music and technology.
Graphic design.
Fine art. And so much more.
This is my English class. I love writing. I always have. And with the great and dedicated teachers here in our English department, class is always fun.
Want more out of L T H S? Your schedule is full. Try Lola.
Lola is Lacey Online Learning Academy. It opens up a world of opportunity for students to take elective courses that aren't offered here in the high school. It also expands our AP course opportunities for all students.
And there's so much more to do after school.
Like the drama club.
Fishing club.
School newspaper.
Hospitality and Tourism Club.
Chemistry Club.
Competitive sports. Nice.
If you're having trouble with your classes, we offer before and after school tutoring with the National Honor Society or the Stretch Program.
Wow, Zane, we've had a fun and full day of school.
Thanks for joining us today.
We hope to see you soon.
Okay.
History Club. Competitive sports. Nice.
If you're having trouble with your classes, we offer before and after school tutoring with the National Honor Society or the Stretch Program.
Wow, Zane, we've had a fun and full day of school.
Thanks for joining us today.
We hope to see you soon.
I don't know why that played again. Hopefully it won't do it again.
Well, I, I have to just interject and say that.
History Club.
Let's hear it one more time.
I think, I think YouTube, you have to go to the tab that has YouTube open. It keeps playing the same YouTube. Clip and going into the next one.
Is that better? Yeah. Okay, good. All right. So, so yeah, we heard the ending three times. So obviously, again, you can see that that video was pre-COVID and gosh, I don't know about all of you, but I really do miss seeing all the students in the hallways like that. So that was a great video, but we are currently working on. Making a new one because our goal is to attract additional non-resident students. To pay to come to Lacey. We currently have two. And we certainly are looking to expand that. And that is covered in policy five, one, one, one. So we have some work to do. But we're definitely headed in the right direction.
And if I could just interject for one moment.
Sure.
I think, and it's important that. When we move forward and we do. Have a video, and I know we've talked about this, we're, we're looking at providing a greater insight into our special ed services. And how they may be available to surrounding districts. For students to come to Lacey and take advantage of our improving and excellent autism program and some of the other programs that we offer.
Thank you for covering that, Mr. Decker. Okay, so definitely more to come on this goal. And our last goal is related to facilities and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. George.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. Our seventh and final goal is to select some projects. That are health and safety related focused and then put them as part of our long-range five-year plan. So. Over the past few years, we have really worked methodically through. A list of projects that we have to undertake. With the exception of one, and that being Cedar Creek, we have to replace one boiler there and working on trying to fit that in. Our next health and safety related projects. Are related to replacing the. Very hodgepodge and kind of antiquated. Fire alarm systems and intrusion or burglar alarm systems in all of our schools. And that is next in queue on our long-range plan. Behind that, we have some exterior door security and. Public address systems and things which through the Finance and Operations Committee. And are working through with our architect, the Long Range Plan. We're looking forward to undertaking those projects in the coming five years.
I don't have. Okay. No video. That we can't loop four or five times. All right. Thank you. And I know there's another part to your presentation later on. But at this time, I am going to turn it over to Kathy Weincoff, who I mentioned earlier, is our New Jersey School Board's field representative. And Kathy, you just let me know when you're going to share your screen so that I can stop sharing mine.
So I wanted to thank everyone for inviting me to participate in your, your board retreat. I will tell you, the, the pandemic has kind of. Changed things around for the way I work. And with some of the things that have happened over the past year. The first thing that Dr. Clark has on the agenda is the board self-evaluation. We do not have a completed evaluation for two thousand twenty. And a lot of that occurred because of the pandemic and. The boards really had to pivot their work. Once March came around. And generally, we do the board self-evaluation. Towards the end of the spring and into the summer months. And generally, we like to have them ready for the board retreat so that. When the time comes and you're establishing the goals, which you, you know, which are already done. That we could specifically. Set some board goals. And those board goals really revolve around board process and procedure. So I think what we need to look at is, as we're talking about the superintendent evaluation timeline. Is to really talk about ensuring that that board self-evaluation gets completed this year by all board members. Because it, it, it's important for us to reflect back on the work that we do as Board of Education members. To see where there are specific areas where we can focus. Our attention as a board to improve, to improve. How we go about doing our, our work as a Board of Education. And then the other thing is to really talk about the superintendent evaluation timeline and overview. I will direct all of you to go to our website. Because there are some great resources there. For the superintendent's evaluation. We generally, Dr. Clark has given a nice overview and an update on where we are with goals right now. So in order for us, okay, to get the evaluation completed by the statutory deadline of July first. That means that, that we need to start the evaluation process soon. So here we go. Thank you very much, Dr. Clark. Well, we will have this pre-conference in March or April. And that really is just to go over the evaluation tool. To, to finalize an evaluation calendar. So that the board knows when the specific dates are for them to complete. The superintendency evaluation. knows when the specific dates are for them to complete the superintendency evaluation. And so oftentimes, what will happen is during this pre-conference, if there are any updates with regards to between now, when she's given this update on the goals, and next month, which chances are there's not going to be a lot that's going to occur, then she initiates the evaluation process by going on to New Jersey School Board's website, and she inputs her district goals, and then she puts whether she's assessed them or where they are, the status of those goals, and then will supply any supporting comments or documentations that the board is going to need to take into consideration for you to go in and do your own self-assessment about the work that Dr. Clark has done during the year. So once she gets all of that input into the system, then the board members go in and they are going to do that self-assessment, and we need to have that completed by mid-May. Because then the next part is that I run a compilation of the evaluations. So what that does is it takes all of the individual input from the board members and puts everything into one comprehensive document so that when the board then meets an executive session to review the compilation, you'll be able to look at the compilation and determine what the majority opinion of the board is. So the superintendent's written evaluation reflects the majority opinion of the board. And then that summative evaluation, based on the majority opinion of the board, is written as the summative evaluation, and the board needs to have that completed by mid-June or early June, depending on when your meeting dates are. Because the final step in the evaluation is after the board writes the summative evaluation and the board agrees that yes, the summative evaluation reflects the majority opinion of the board, that written evaluation needs to be given to Dr. Clark, and then Dr. Clark and the board meets in executive session to have a summary conference about the evaluation. So that means that there's a conversation where if there's something that needs to be clarified in the evaluation, the board can clarify it. You know, if the superintendent has any questions about the evaluation, she asks the board at that particular point in time. Now, it's also important to just know that if any of your board members are conflicted, meaning they have a family member who works in district or they themselves work in district, you cannot participate in the superintendent's evaluation. So they would be excused from any discussion whatsoever. They cannot see the compiled evaluation. They cannot provide input into that evaluation. They really can't have any kind of discussion with regards to the performance, the contract, or anything that has to do, excuse me, with Dr. Clark's employment in the district. So, you know, we need to just make sure that, you know, at least I know we have one board member on your board who has been conflicted from participating in the evaluation. So that's really the overview and the process with regards to the evaluation. If you go onto our website, www njsba.org, and you scroll down to the very bottom of our homepage, there is a link for, it will say CSA and board evaluations. If you click on that link, you will see there is a whole host of documents that you can read through and review with regards to the superintendent evaluation. There is a PDF of a booklet that if I were coming in in person and having this meeting, I would be handing it to you. So you'll be able to go in, you can download it, save it, read through it. There is a webinar there that you can watch that really walks you through that evaluation process. There's an FAQ there that has questions that you can, you know, see what the responses to those are. And then, once you review all that documentation, if you have any additional questions, you can reach out to me, and I would be more than happy to kind of walk you through any questions that you may have. So that really covers the evaluation process. What I would suggest is that Dr. Clark and the board president kind of sit down and work out the calendar soon and share it with the board so that you know what those timelines are and to make sure that you're able to hit every single one of those deadlines within timely fashion to meet that July 1 statutory deadline. So I think, I don't think there's anything else on the next slide with regards to the evaluation, Dr. Clark. So I think what we can do is go, you know, if you let me share my screen, I did want to, you know, I was asked to do a small presentation, small, I guess it's never really small, but a presentation on roles and responsibilities. Does anybody have any questions with regards to either the board evaluation or the superintendent's evaluation before we move on? Okay. So, Dr. Clark, if you can, can I just go ahead and share my screen over here?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Do I have to stop sharing my screen?
No, she should be able to.
No, I just told it to bring this up. So I'm going to tell you this. This is a brand-new program that I put together for tonight. And I did it because, you know, I've been in a couple different times with your board members talking about roles and responsibilities. I will, you know, hopefully, you know, there are some scenarios in here for us to talk about as we move forward. So I'm hoping that you will all chime in as we move forward. So what I wanted to do with this particular presentation is to really go through and explain, you know, in as simplistic terms as I can, the difference between board oversight versus board overstepping. Because as board members, we, through the Code of Ethics, really are to make sure that we are making sure that the schools are well-run, but not running the schools. So oversight is ensuring that the schools are well-run. Overstepping means not running the schools. And sometimes, you know, it's a very fine line that we have to walk, and it's very easy to cross over from that oversight responsibility into overstepping. So when we look at it in its most simplistic terms, okay, the board has four main functions. You're to provide guidance through policy development, where to ensure quality instruction through curriculum standards assessment, you know, making sure our staff has professional development, and assessing results. We provide for the effective management of the district by hiring and evaluating the superintendent. It always comes as a surprise, I know you have some community members that are on here, for boards and community members to really understand that the Board of Education has but one employee, and that is the superintendent of schools. She is the board's only direct hire. Every other staff member that is hired in the district comes to the board for approval, but it has to be as a recommendation of the superintendent of schools. So you either approve those recommendations that she is bringing to you at a board meeting, or you can vote no. But if you vote no, you can't say to her, "No, we don't want candidate A. We want candidate B." No, the board can't do that. If you vote no on candidate A, then Dr. Clark has to go back out and start the process all over again to bring another candidate to the board for the board to approve. So that, you know, is very different. And as such, because we only have one employee, it is the board's responsibility to ensure that she is evaluated on an annual basis. If she did not make sure that all of your staff members in the district were evaluated and the board found out about it, they would be very unhappy. On the flip side, if I were a community member and I found out that the board wasn't evaluating the superintendent in order to hold her accountable, I, as a community member, would be unhappy also. So we need to take that responsibility very serious. And so the fourth function is to provide for two-way communication between the community and the board. That one becomes the trickiest of all. Because how do we have that ongoing two-way communication between the board and the community? Oftentimes, it's through surveys. Oftentimes, it could be through community forums. But your most recent and probably most effective way to provide for that two-way communication was the strategic planning initiative that we went through. Because the board asked you to community to come in and go through a process where they had direct input to the educational goals for your district for the last five years. So now, what will happen once the plan gets delivered to the board is for the board to ensure that there is updates on the progress of that strategic plan. And so Dr. Clark will annually give an update or a state of the strategic plan report out to your community. So here we are. We brought them in. We got input. We created goals. We created the action plans. And now, as a group, we're going to be accountable to our stakeholders by letting them know, here's what we worked on in year one. Here are the actions that we've accomplished. Some of these, we weren't able to get completely accomplished this year, so we're going to move them into year two. There may be some things that, for whatever reasons, cannot be accomplished. So we're going to let our stakeholders know that these action items, we're not going to be able to accomplish, and here's why. And then we're going to let them know, and for year two, here's what we're going to begin to work on. So that's one really good way to provide that two-way communication between your board and community. Now, for newer board members and for your community, it's also important to know that board meetings are not the time to have that ongoing two-way communication. Because community members are coming to your board meetings and through public comments are making statements, asking questions, but there's not the opportunity at that particular point in time to immediately respond back to the community. It's sometimes hard for the community to understand that it's their opportunity to voice their concerns. And the reason they're given that opportunity is through statute to be able to have public comment at your meeting, but for them to understand that it is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public and not a public meeting. Two very different things. And Board of Education meetings are not modeled after your town council meetings. Very different. The roles and responsibilities between the board and your town council are very different also. So we have to find ways to provide for that two-way communication between you, the board, and your community. And then it's also to understand, okay, that your superintendent, and you'll find it in your board bylaws, is the spokesperson for your district, and your board president is the spokesperson for the board. However, that doesn't mean that the board president has carte blanche to be able to say whatever it is that needs to be said. She needs to be communicating the majority of what the board has requested that she respond to. So if a community member sends your board president an email, your board president most likely will say, "Thank you very much. I'm in receipt of your email," and then send it to the superintendent. Because part of that communication that we have to get across to our community is there is a chain of command that we need to follow within our district. And that chain of command really goes back to your first function, providing guidance through policy development. And so the chain of command, in its purest sense, will let us, and I refer to me as a "you" because I am a former board member and I haven't gotten out of that "us" part of me, is that chain of command will eventually let us know as a board whether we need to change a regulation or procedure for carrying out our policy, or whether we have to actually make changes to our policy. So if your community members come directly to you as a board member, or come directly to you as a Board of Education, and don't start at the teacher level, and then move up to the principal level, and then move up to the administrative level, and then go up to the superintendent, and then from the superintendent up to the board, we are not going to know where the breakdown occurred. So if it makes its way to the board, you know, through each level, Dr. Clark can make adjustments to the regulations for carrying out the chain of command. Because the regulations are the how the policy is going to carry out, and that is her responsibility. The policy is what? That's the board's responsibility. So she carries out, and she's responsible for those regulations. If she goes through those regulations and says, "Well, the way the regulations are set up really carries out the intent of the policy," then she will recommend to the board that we may want to look at this particular policy and make some adjustments to it. So it's important for us as board members to make sure that we let the community know that there is a chain of command that needs to be followed, and why. Because if we insert ourselves as board members in any place within that line of the chain in any place within that line of the chain of command, if it does come to a discussion that's going to be held at the board level, we may conflict ourselves out of a very important discussion that needs to take place at the board level, which is the board's responsibility. So we really want to thank whoever it is that comes to us, and then make sure that that information gets communicated to the superintendent. Any questions? That's a lot for just the first slide. Okay, so then we talk about, okay, board and superintendent roles. So when we look at this, okay, we have roles, responsibilities, we've got focus, and we have action. So the board, okay, is responsible for the vision, the mission, the goals, and the policy. That's the what. And the superintendent is responsible for objectives, procedures, action plans, and regulations. So the objectives go along with the procedures and the objectives, and the action plans belong to the goals, and the regulations belong to the policy. That's the how. That's her responsibility. And then we focus on what, why, and how much. Okay? And then she focuses on how is it going to happen? When is it going to happen? Where is it going to happen? And by whom? And then the board, okay, votes. She recommends, the board votes, and then she implements. And it's really based on, okay, trust and communication. So we really, as a board, okay, need to make sure that communication is happening between the board and the superintendent committees, you know, and the board. And we really have to trust, especially when we are working under a committee structure, that, you know, our committees are doing their due diligence with regards to items that they have on their agendas, that, you know, as a board, we're really focused on making sure, okay, that we stay over there into that lane of the what. So we talk about oversight, overstepping, management, and governance. Okay, so part of it then becomes, okay, what is the major difference between oversight and overstepping and management and governance? So governance, okay, is really providing direction, and I just forgot to, okay, so everybody probably turned off their phones except for me. So I'm going to do that right now. So governance is really providing direction by adopting the vision, the goals, and policies. Okay? The other thing here, you know, is evaluating the superintendent. So the governance piece belongs to the board. Okay, this is where the board has its authority. And it's the board has the authority, not the individual board members, not the board president. It is the board that has the authority to make the decisions and provide direction, okay, to the superintendent. It's not individuals providing direction to the superintendent. It's not the board president providing direction to the superintendent. It is the board, which in your case means four people on the board need to vote, okay, in the same manner, and that then provides direction to the superintendent. And so we provide that through, you know, goals, policies, and, you know, talking about, okay, in through the superintendent's evaluation, we're also, okay, directing the superintendent through that evaluation also. So just make sure, okay, we get that understanding that it is the majority of the board. You know, and so the only other thing that the board president can do outside of a board member is to ask the business administrator to provide a rice notice to the superintendent when you're going to be discussing her performance. And even then, your board president has to be very careful about the language that is being used whenever she asks the business admin, your board secretary, to provide this rice notice. She needs to make sure that the words that are said are, "Mr. DeGeorge, on behalf of the Board of Education, please provide a rice notice to Dr. Clark for X, Y, Z dates." And she needs to couch it, a board president needs to say the words in that manner so there is no mistake taken by anyone that she is the one who is asking for that to happen. She's asking for it on behalf of the board to have the rice notice given. Because there was an ethics ruling that came out against a board president who was found to have been in violation of the Code of Ethics because they themselves went and asked to have a rice notice given. So that's why it becomes very careful about the words we're using. Because the other part of it is, is that the board president has no other authority than any other member of your Board of Education. What she does is she is responsible for running the meetings. But that's pretty much it. Okay? She responds on behalf of the board in instances where that needs to be done, but she has no more power, no more authority than any other board member. So just, you know, be mindful of that. You know, we're all, seven of us, when we come to that board table, we're equal. So then management, okay, that really means, okay, we're putting plans and systems into place. And so, you know, I always ask, okay, how many people are managers in the job that you do on your daily life? Okay? And at some point in time, each and every one of us have been a manager, and we're trained in specific areas to manage, okay, in the job that we're doing. But when we come to the board meetings, we are not managers. We bring our expertise to the board table to help in the discussions that are going on, but we are not actually managing what is going on in the district. That is the superintendent's responsibility. So if, because I was in my previous life, I was an accountant, and I came onto the board thinking, okay, I was going to be able to get in there and see, you know, every little line item that was in the budget and kind of find out, you know, where all this money is going, and, you know, go in and, you know, look through every single thing only to find out. That's not my role. It really wasn't my role, because the first time I got the board secretary's report, I called up the BA and I said to him, "What the heck is this?" Because it didn't look like any other kind of financials that I had seen in my job that I was doing as an accountant. So I did every other kind of accounting there was, except I had no idea, you know, what governmental accounting was. And believe it or not, when you look at board secretaries' reports, they're a different animal, all on their own. And so it was for me to be able to ask questions about the budget. You know, how do I tell if a line item is over expended in the budget? And so the business administrator would explain that to me. So we need to make sure as board members that we're not crossing over into that lane of becoming managing the district. You know, so that, again, is the superintendent's responsibility. And we evaluate how well she manages through the superintendent's evaluation. You know, one of the other field service representatives who no longer works for the association, you know, always used to tell the story about her district was going through a referendum. And Diane is no bigger than I am, you know, she's a short person, little vertically challenged. And when they were going through her referendum, she was climbing ladders and going up onto the roof to inspect things. Is that her role? Absolutely not. Absolutely, positively not. It is not for us to be able to go over and see how they're doing things. It is our responsibility to come to the board table and ask questions. How is the roof job going? Is it going to be on time? Is it going to be on budget? Have they run into any problems? If they have, is there a plan in place to address whatever issues or problems may be occurring? But it's not our responsibility to go and check things out. It's to come and ask those questions, whether we're doing it in committee or whether we're doing it at the board table. The other thing that we need to do, okay, is, you know, if the management, okay, we're providing oversight, the superintendent is doing management, what's the oversight of management? Okay, so here it is. Okay, making sure there are desired results in place, and they are appropriate and clearly defined. Making sure planned systems and procedures designed to achieve desired results exist. Making sure the existing planned systems and procedures are monitored for effectiveness and change if necessary. Okay, so the board's focus, okay, is this. Okay, and part of the board's job is to ensure that the superintendent is doing the job that they need to do this. Okay, and it comes through the question. So overstepping then, okay, is when a school board member or an individual member, okay, steps out of the school board's governance and oversight authority and into the superintendent's district management authority. So we have to be careful, okay, and make sure that whenever we're going to do something, that we're not, okay, crossing over that lane into the superintendent's role. And so it really comes down to a school board member, okay, telling the superintendent or staff how to do their jobs. Or tries to do the job for the superintendent instead. So we have to make sure, okay, that this is where seeing that the schools are well-run. So major overstepping or micromanagement occurs when a board member is doing something that the district is paying somebody in your district to do. So, you know, if you have a facilities manager in your district who's supposed to make sure everything is functioning well in each of the buildings, then as a board member, we shouldn't be doing that. We should allow that person to do their job. We shouldn't be coming over to school to make sure the lawns are mowed or painting is being done. That is not our role. We just need to ask the questions. Is the ongoing painting still occurring? I know we were, you know, doing painting at three different schools. What's the status? Is it going to be on time by the time the school opens? You know, those are the types of questions that we ask, but we shouldn't be on school grounds looking to see if something happens. The same thing is if some kind of new technology is being implemented into the school. We ask the question, we don't try to find ways to get into the school and go into the classrooms to see if they're using the technology. So there are ways for us as board members to be able to find out, okay, are things occurring as they should be within the school? And so when we overstep, okay, here's what we do. We undermine the authority of the superintendent. Says to me, okay, maybe we as a board don't trust our superintendent to be doing the job that we've hired her to do. It just creates, okay, all kinds of issues between the board and the superintendent. It can also create issues with the staff. So we really need to make sure, okay, that we stay within that oversight level and find out the appropriate way for us to ensure that the schools are being well-run. So here are a couple scenarios, just to kind of look at and see. You know, first one, you know, are the board members providing oversight? Or are they overstepping? So in the first one, a board member posts a question on Facebook asking for input on the high school English teacher's actions or behavior. She continues posting stating that her daughter is upset because of the way the teacher runs her classroom and wants to know if others are having the same concerns. She then goes to the superintendent, shows them concerns, wanting something to change. Is that oversight or is that overstepping? Unmute.
Over.
Over. Absolutely. The minute, okay, the minute that she posts something on Facebook asking for input, not good, not good. Facebook is not your friend when you are a board member. It gets you into all kinds of trouble. And believe it or not, liking something, a comment, a statement, a page, is making a statement also. So as board members, if you have, okay, a problem with something that's going on in the classroom, you need to follow the chain of command. You need to go to the teacher and go up through the chain of command. Sometimes within school districts, you know, superintendents will ask board members that if they are having an issue or a problem in the classroom, to please let him or her know. So that, you know, not that they're going to step in, but just so they're aware that there's an issue and that it may create a concern. And sometimes superintendents have to step in with regards to board members. But the proper way for this to be addressed would have been for her to go, you know, to the teacher. And if that didn't satisfy the issue, then she would go to the principal and work her way up to the superintendent. A proud board member posts on Facebook and Instagram when their high school team won the state basketball tournament. He's very proud of the team and posts a picture of them as well. Is that oversight or overstepping?
Oversight.
It is oversight. It is oversight, because as board members, we're supposed to be cheerleaders for the school district. And so, you know, it is for us to be proud of the accomplishments of our students or our staff. And that is something that we would be able to do as board members. Okay, so here's another one. A board member called the district A board member called the district contracted painter and asked the painter to change the color of the new paint for the hallways. The contractor changed the paint color and the superintendent was surprised with the fi- when the final bill arrived charging double for paint and the original color and the new color. I mean, we sit here and we laugh, but can I tell you? If these things didn't happen, I wouldn't have them to put up here on the screen. You know, and so I can remember, just as an aside, when I was sitting on my board and we had done a referendum for our, our, our elementary school. Our board, honest and truly, I'm almost embarrassed to say, spent more time discussing colors of paint for the classrooms and for the hallways and for the lockers than we spent on talking about classroom adjustments for the instruction of kids. Kind of silly when you really think about it. But there is, a board member should not be reaching out to any contractors or anybody and asking them to do anything. And that even goes to, okay, if you're driving by the school and you see the custodians out mowing the lawn and the cus- and them being mowed in a zigzag fashion and it looks crazy, to stop them and say, hey, timeout, you need to go back and you need to remow the lawn. No way, no how, that's not your, that's not your job. Because now you are giving direction to a staff member. And as board members, we cannot give direction to staff members. It would be if we're driving by the school and it's right by the board office to stop by and see Mr. De George and say, oh, my gosh, did you ask them to mow it in a zigzag fashion for a special reason? You know, so we have to be really careful about that. Even, you know, giving direction to anybody in the building. Um, oh, this one's for you too, Mr. De George. During a board meeting, there are several board members who have questions about expenditures that were in the budget they approved, including the purchase of new technology for the high school. Board members are curious about how the money was spent and they want to make sure the teachers are receiving professional development so they know how to teach the new technology. Is that oversight or is that overstepping? So in this case, oversight, absolutely. Um, for you to ask those questions and chances are, you know, there will be some kind of a report out given to the board about when it was purchased. Has it been put in the classroom? Have the teachers received professional development? You know, how are the students, you know, working with the technology if that happens to be what it is? But those kinds of questions we can ask as board members. So, you know, the other thing, you know, as we go through it is sometimes things are just really common sense. Um, and so before we as board members, and oftentimes we go and we do these things because we do care and we have a sense of pride. But we also need to make sure that we aren't crossing over that lane. The board is discussing the upcoming budget process at a workshop. So a board member brings up that there's no mention of district goals or the strategic plan in the process. They remember that during a New Jersey School Boards Association presentation on the budget, that the budget should be tied to the district's strategic plan and/or the district goals. Is this appropriate or not appropriate? Appropriate. Because that is something that we can ask as we're going through the budget workshop. Uh, the last one, believe it or not, sometimes gets a lot of board members into trouble. There is an opening for an elementary teacher in your district. A graduate of your district has applied for the position. Many of your constituents have called and emailed you their support for getting this individual hired. You let the superintendent know about the calls and emails and strongly encourage the superintendent to hire this new teacher. You're a board member and you should have a voice in this decision. This goes back, okay, to the, one of the very first things that I said. You as board members can't be telling your superintendent who she should be recommending for positions. And so that, okay, is a major violation of the code of ethics because in several rooms, in several different ways. You know, oversight, it is ensuring that, you know, the proper, the superintendent is, is being responsible for bringing board, uh, staff members for you all to approve, for you not to make personal promises about getting people hired in your district. So we have to be really careful about that piece also. And, you know, there's a process for hiring staff. So in this instance, you could ask the superintendent, can you please explain to us the process that was used for hiring staff? And she can let you know the process. You can ask, how many people applied for the position? What were the job requirements? Who was involved in the interview process? What was it about the candidate that you're recommending that may had them rise to the top? So there are questions that the board can ask with regards to personnel, but you really can't be telling the superintendent who she should be recommending for positions in the district. So it really does come down to knowing your boundaries. I mean, know your boundaries as a board member. Know your boundaries as, you know, a board president. Know your boundaries as committee members. So that becomes really important that we know, okay, what is, what, where do we cross that magic line between, okay, being a board member and moving over into the superintendent's arena? Being a board leader and moving over the line to where you are directing staff and/or administration to do things. Knowing your boundaries, you know, as board members in what you can say in, with the community and how you respond to issues that are going on in the community. And so sometimes it's good to go back and review those boundaries to know, okay, what's our responsibility? What's the superintendent's? What's the board president's responsibility? What's board member responsibilities? When does the board president speak on behalf of the board? When does the superintendent speak on behalf of the district? So it really is to go back and to look at, at those, those boundaries that we have. I don't know if anybody has any particular questions with regards to roles and responsibilities?
I have a question. It goes back to the
Go ahead.
The facility, uh, facility. So let's just say I am driving by and I say, oh, that, you know, the paint, it looks faded and, or, you know, whatever. So it needs improvement. So how would I communicate that then, um, to get that looked at without overstepping? Would I call the, um, chair and say, can you bring this up in the next meeting? Or would I call Mr. De George? Because some things do need to be addressed, you know, that look a little disheveled. Say like if there's weeds or things like that. So how do we address that then?
So I think that what you can do is, is book, okay? You can take it to the committee chair. If you're gonna send an email, okay, I would, you know, send an email to the committee chair and you can CC Mr. De George and you could CC the board president just to let both of them know that you've reached out to the committee chair. And then hopefully, okay, Mr. De George most likely would address it, would go and look at himself or have the facilities manager look at it. But it could well be something that he has a conversation with the committee chair and say, you know what, this may be something that we're gonna need to put on the committee agenda. And for them to have it, it could be something that he's going to need to add to the facilities plan, because he has a list of, of projects needs to be addressed through facilities. And usually the facilities committee would know what that list is and he may need to add it to that list. Um, you CC the board president, just so the board president is, knows that you, you reached out to him, but this board president doesn't really need to do anything about it, just that she's aware of it and you've sent it through the proper channels. So that would be the way that I would suggest that it be addressed.
Okay.
You know, it's the same thing pretty much with, with anything. You know, I always, you know, as, as a board president, somebody who was a board president for more years than what I really wanted to be, but nobody else wanted the job. You know, I was always pretty flexible with, you know, with the board members. You know, if they CC'd me, just so I knew what was going on. But I didn't need to, you know, be on top of things all the time. Because usually what would end up happening is if I was at an agenda setting meeting or something with, you know, the superintendent and the business administrator, I would just keep a running like list of different things. Board members had either sent emails and say, was this addressed? Was this addressed? Is this something that had to go onto a committee agenda? Is this something that we as a board needed, you know, to, to vote on or whatever? To handle it that way.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I loved your presentation and you had some very engaging examples there. Real life examples.
I, thank you Regina. I mean, it's really, it's, it's always interesting to kind of see what things are out there. And I think sometimes it's actually good to see like real life issues that have occurred in other districts to kind of bring things back to more on our level. I mean, you know, one of the best examples that I didn't put on here because it really is quite long is, is, one of the field service representatives said that there was a brand new board member that, you know, she was on the transportation committee. And this board member followed buses for their bus routes. You know, and, and was coming back and trying to tell the business administrator, because it was a small district, this bus route needs to be changed, this one needs to be done here, we need to do this. Do you know what those bus drivers are doing? And I would be like, you've got to be kidding me. But some people really think that that's what their responsibility is when they come on the board, but it's not. That's, that's the administration's responsibility to take care of. And if it's an issue, to alert the board. Say, you know, we had an issue, you know, with a transportation route. Usually, you know, they do that with the, the transportation or facilities or finance or wherever transportation is within your committees. We had an issue with one of the bus runs. It was addressed. We've taken, you know, here's how, what we did. It's done. And so as board members, we know, because what we don't want to have happen is for us to be out and about and somebody says, oh, did you hear what happened with the bus route? And we're sitting there saying, yes, but we really don't know. So it's just a good idea to kind of give a heads up. Um, but we don't need to know all the details. Just that something happened. We took care of it. It's been addressed. If anybody gets in touch with you, please have them get in touch with Mr. De George. And then go about doing our business. Any other questions?
Kathy, this is Linda. I, I agree with Regina. This was probably one of the best presentations you've given. Very thorough, so thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks.
So since you were my first, that means I can do this in other districts.
Definitely.
And it didn't fall flat.
Thank you Kathy, you answered a lot of questions that I had. I'm Kim, new board member, by the way.
Great, 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 great. Oh, you're welcome.
I'll remember that paint story for a long time.
The paint story. Okay, so Vanessa, I am gonna stop sharing.
Okay.
And throw it back to you.
Yes, thank you so much Kathy. That was, uh, I'm going to reiterate what everybody said. Uh, it was an excellent presentation, very thorough. Some of the examples were really funny. I know they weren't meant to be funny and some of them were spot on. So we thank you for your time. Um, and thank you also for going over the board self-evaluation and superintendent evaluation timeline and the overview. So at this time, I am going to, uh, hold on a second, one way. All right, I am going to turn it over to Mr. De George, who is going to talk to us a little bit about board member role in negotiation. So Mr. De George, the floor is yours.
Clark, do you mind putting up my 75 slide deck? The one slide that I have, you know, in part of the presentation?
Uh, wait, which one was that?
The, the one that says board member role in negotiations. In your, in your slide deck?
Uh, it is what I have up, what are you guys seeing?
I don't, something you guys hear in your screen again.
Oh, yes, 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 sorry, let me get there. Hold on a second, figure out where I'm at here. Share screen, Mr. Little did tell me how to do that. All right, can you see it now?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, okay, there you go.
Right, there you go. So, yeah Kathy, I have to echo what everyone said, very well done. Good examples, very colorful, very timely, so much appreciated. I'm gonna cover the one area that Kathy did not cover and that was, that was intentionally. And that's the board member role in negotiation. It's a very timely topic as the board is currently negotiating with all of the bargaining units in the district. So it's one of those years where it's the perfect storm of, of negotiations. So I, I wanna give a little bit of background. In New Jersey, public school districts, boards of education are one of two types. The first type is what's called a board of the whole. Under this form, the, every issue is discussed by the entire board of education at the first of, of what most likely is two monthly meetings in public. And this meeting is commonly referred to as the working meeting. The working meeting, it looks a lot like what we're doing tonight, which is lots of discussion and no action. The second meeting of the month is called the action meeting and that's the meeting that looks a lot like the meetings that we have here in Lacey once a month. And that is where the action gets taken. The second form of board of education is a board by committee. This form says that the board is divided into separate committees by topic. Finance, facilities, policy, so on and so forth. We are a board that is formed by a committee. And each committee may have And each committee may have no more than a minority of board members. In our case, we have seven board members. And so no committee may have more than three board members. Otherwise, we have a quorum of the board and then we'd have to have an advertised public meeting. So let's talk about committees and, and this is really where I'm gonna head. There are two types of those, there's a standing committee, which is established by the board by law and which meet on a regular basis, in our case monthly, right? So we here in Lacey have three standing committees. Finance and operations, curriculum and policy. There's another type of committee, it's called ad hoc, which is authorized by the full board to address specific issues and which is meant to exist for only a limited period of time. Right now, our board has two ad hoc committees, one for redistricting and one for negotiations. So now we're gonna get to the topic which is why you bought your ticket this evening. The roles and responsibilities of the board members in negotiations process. So we have to begin by something that Kathy referred to in her presentation, it's called conflict. Conflict is the process of determining which board members are prohibited by law from participating in negotiations. In our case, we have two board members who are conflicted and therefore may not participate in that process. So negotiations committee. From the five non-conflicted members, the board selected three to form the negotiations ad hoc committee. In doing this, the board delegated its duty to sit at the table and negotiate on its behalf to that committee of board members. And only to that committee of board members. Now, it's, it's customary for the board to engage in labor attorney to serve on that committee as well. And that's what we've done in our case here by engaging our labor attorney, Mr. Padula and his, his team. The committee chair, in, in our case, Mr. Scanlon. It is, is his duty to be a conduit for the flow of information, kind of what Kathy was talking about. Nothing new really here under the sun. If board members have questions or make comments about the negotiations process, they really should follow those questions or comments through him. If on the other hand, he has comments and questions for the non-conflicted board members, then he would do much the same. Now, the two non-conflicted board members that we have, and we only have two, right? Three on the committee and then two others who are not conflicted. They can help share their thoughts on what the board's framework or their goal, the game plan ought to be for negotiations. And then Mr. Scanlon in turn will tell them information on what's happening. So the detail that's presented, and this is important, by Mr. Scanlon is directly dependent on something called ground rules. Those rules that both sides, the board and the bargaining unit agree and vote on how they're going to engage the business. And in this particular instance, there is a ground rule which speaks to whether or not the negotiation teams will be permitted to share detailed information with their membership or they can only share topical summary information with their membership until such time that the memorandum of agreement or that preliminary agreement document is achieved. So it depends on the, the ground rules. Now, in, in the two cases we have ongoing, we haven't really gotten to agree on what ground rules are yet. But once those ground rules have been agreed to, they'll be shared with the, the non-conflicted board members and then the committee and the process will be guided accordingly. Either way, it's the duty of the non-conflicted board members to, whatever they're told, is to keep it absolutely confidential. Now, the most likely place that a discussion about negotiations would take place is during a private session of a board meeting. So the resolution that adjourns the meeting into private session must include the topic. And, and the law in recent years has become very, very specific as to how a board must adjourn itself into private session. We can no longer say, we're just going to private session, see you in an hour. We must and we do in this district state the topics in as much detail as we're permitted to say about each of those topics. And again, if the resolution includes negotiations and remember governed by the bylaws, the ground rules rather, that negotiations teams have agreed upon, then that really sets the tone to exactly and specifically what will be discussed in a private session. And of course, the conflicted board members may not be present in the room where a private session is being held for the duration of that discussion. And believe it or not, that really is in a nutshell, the board member role in the negotiation process. So at this point, if there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take them.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you say the private session resolution must include whatever, is contractual matters the proper terminology or is there something other than that that we need to say?
Sure, right. There are nine general headings within the Open Public Meetings Act that would be permissible to discuss in a private session. So we here generally call it contractual matters and then specifically collective bargaining. That's how we would typically include that language in a resolution to adjourn to private session.
That's as specific as we get then?
Yes, there really is as specific as we get. And then you know what, that, that does really check the box though, that says it not, but at the same time, not too much.
All right, thank you.
No, you're welcome, thank you for the question.
I have a question Pat. Who is, who besides the negotiating committee makes up the ground rules? Like who, uh, who would, who would do that?
Uh, it really is the two committees. The committee for the board and the committee for the union or the bargaining unit. And, and in, in our case, our labor attorney is very experienced. It, which is one of the reasons we have him. And he offers a lot of guidance as to what we ought to have in a set of ground rules and what we ought not to have. But that's gonna be, there's a negotiation over the ground rules, that's the way it starts.
Okay, is he in that meeting when they set the ground rules or?
He will be.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you, anything else? All right, well, thanks for, for that, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeGeorge, for that very informative presentation. And for the last segment of our board retreat, we are going to have a budget workshop. And Mr. DeGeorge, this is your section as well, so four is yours again.
All right, good news, is only one slide. Bad news, I have 14 pages of notes, so strap yourself in. So, so what's a budget workshop, right? This is a, a new term for our board. What does it mean? Well, I, I think simply stated, a workshop is a conversation, right? Between me, in this case, and the members of the board superintendent, Mr. Decker and so on and so forth. About the status of the 2021, 2022 district budget. So in a sense, it combines all of the information that we've been talking about at committee way, since way back in August, as well as all the information that has been shared with all board members in what is our weekly confidential notes that we share with them. Now, what the budget workshop is not, is a conversation between the board and the members of the public. Instead, the members of the public play the role of like an observer. Think of those medical TV shows that, that we watch and we see people sit upstairs in the gallery to observe the operation. That's kind of what's happening here. We are having a conversation about where we are on the budget. And, and so why are we doing in public? Well, because as we know, anytime we have a quorum or a majority of board members who are assembled in one place for the purpose of discussing board business, the law says that we have an award meeting. And that that meeting must be advertised and happen in public. And that's exactly what happened, this meeting was advertised. The two purposes were stated in the advertisement. And so we must have that conversation or having that conversation in a public forum. So here we go. Again, there are no attachments or slides other than this riveting slide we're looking at right now. And I appreciate that Dr. Clark did a great job on this slide. But I did give some notes to the board members earlier today. Now, I gave a topical outline, which kind of tells you that the things we're gonna touch upon. But you don't have notes on everything, right? We're gonna talk through things and, and sometimes I'm gonna say, hey, little refer to this or refer to that that I provided to you as a means of diving a little bit deeper into a topic, right? So way back in September, we learned that there are three steps in the budget process and I gave that to you again, that one slide. Step number one is to estimate the total revenue or the money we think we're gonna get in a year. Step number two is to estimate the total appropriations or what's the spending plan for that revenue? And step number three, unless you're the federal government, revenue must equal the spending plan. That is just the very simple but very important process and that's a good backdrop to entering into this. So, so let's talk about revenue, right? Again, I gave you in your notes, I gave you a general fund revenue summary, kind of where we stand right now. And I'll kind of talk through the, the main topics of that. So at 72 plus million dollars, for this 2020, 2021 school year that we're in right now, the general fund or the operating budget accounts for 93.1% of the total district budget, right? So it's where we do almost everything, the other two areas being grants and debt, and we're not gonna talk about those tonight. So let's talk about the property tax levy a little bit. And I gave you a, really a packet of slides on the property tax levy. So when we talk about the property tax levy, we, we say, and I remind you in our, in your notes that we have two components. The first component is the general fund component and the second component is the debt service component. So at just shy of 49.7 million dollars, the general fund component of this current year's tax levy accounts for 70% of general fund budget. That's a lot, right? A 2% statutory increase on the current levy equals 990 plus thousand dollars. And that is what the board is entitled to raise the levy for next year. In addition, the board has bank cap, which we had almost 700,000 dollars and in this current budget, we used almost 400,000 dollars of that, so we have 300,000 dollars left. And we'll be proposing to add that to the levy, which means that the total increase for next year is almost 1.3 million or 2.6% for a total levy of just under 51 million dollars for the coming year. So let's talk about the other component, debt service. And it's important because it's actually helpful to us. Now, debt service for those who have, may have forgotten is the principal and interest that we as a district have to repay on our outstanding debt every year. It's like a mortgage, right? So our total debt service, the mortgage interest payments for next year equal 3,650,200 dollars. Now, 2.9 million dollars or so is principal and 755,000 dollars is interest, which is 118,000 dollars or 3% or so of the current 2021 school year budget. Of that amount, we just found out today that the state of New Jersey is giving us 55, 555,287 dollars in aid, which leaves a net balance of just under 3.1 million dollars for the taxpayers to, to pay back. If part of their, as the debt service component of their levy. So what does this cost the taxpayer? Where we combine the general fund portion with the debt service fund portion, what do we get? It's 54 million dollars. That's a net increase of 2.28% from the current year tax levy. And so let's talk about calculating that, right? Now, I gave some notes to the board and at the tentative budget adoption, which will happen on the 18th of March, we will, as we always do, go through that, that calculation. So if we take all of the 54 million dollars and we divide it by the ratable property in town, you get, which I, I gotta say, it increased about 37 million dollars now. The ratables in town are just under 4 billion dollars in value according to the tax assessor. And there was a 37 million or just about 1% increase from last year. So when you take the 50 million dollars, 51 million dollars of operating budget and add to it the 3 million dollars of debt service, you get that 2.28% increase. But when you take the 54 million dollars and you divide it by the assessed valuation of 4 billion, you get a tax rate of 1.369. So what does that mean, right? For the average home, now you'll see this slide when we do our budget presentation at the March 18th meeting. But the average home value according to our tax assessor in town increased about 1,800 dollars from 279.4 to 281.2. The associated tax rate increased 0.017, which if you're talking, if you speak tax pennies, that's about two tax pennies. So the average homeowner, the increase to the average homeowner would be 72.99 cents, 6 dollars and a cent a month for the coming school year. That's what the tax levy would increase according to what we're looking at right now. So again, it's good, it's helpful for us to know that the value of the home increased and the value of the ratables increased, which helps drive down the tax rate and that the tax rate itself increased 1.26%, which is which is where we're at, which is where we as a board have discussed the levy to be and where we unfortunately need it to have to be. Any questions on property taxes before I hop onto the next? All right, so the next component of the revenue side of the budget is state aid. And again, I gave you a, a state aid chart which compares this year to what we're looking at next year. So at just a hair more than 19 million dollars categorical state aid for this year accounts for 26.4% of the budget. Now, this morning, Now, this morning, the New Jersey Public School District received our state aid notices for the coming twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. And as expected, the S two law caused us to lose state aid. We'll lose another one point three million dollars next year of equalization aid. That's a little bit better. We were expecting to lose one point six million. So I guess if there's good news, it's one point three instead of one point six. But we got more debt service aid by about twenty-four thousand dollars. So the offset is really still like a one point three million dollar reduction. I really thought that we would get something called impact aid. We did not. Dr. Clark, is it last week or two weeks ago, we met with our legislators and spoke about the issues which have actually come to fruition in the in the loss of aid. And they are, and we will continue to do everything we can do between now and the time the final budget is adopted to legislate more aid for us because our case is compelling. And also, we are one of a handful of districts who belong to that lawsuit, the S two lawsuit and the Save Our Schools group of districts who are lobbying for a change in the formula. Will any of that take any root? I don't know. All I can deal with are the facts and those facts tell me that right now we are going to lose, we're going to have one point three million dollars less in state aid next year. So if you go all the way back to that chart, which is the general fund summary of revenue, you'll see that we right now will generate seventy-two million, six hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars in the general fund, which is a six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar or point eight six percent increase from the amount of general fund operating revenue this year, which is considering we lost one point three million dollars in state aid, remarkable that we were able to be in the position that we are in. The question is, is it enough? Now, before we answer that question, I want to talk about, I'm going to deviate from what I said. Now, we're going to talk about something called Esser, E S S E R money. What the heck does that mean, right? Well, last April, it's a law, S thirty-five, forty-eight, to be specific, that New Jersey took funds provided by the federal government and passed those funds through to local governments and school districts. And the funds really were intended to be used to help combat the COVID nineteen pandemic. Now, last year, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we received almost five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in Esser money. It's, I looked today, I think we have fourteen thousand dollars left. All of it put to good use. I know Dr. Clark has spoken about the desk dividers that we purchased for every student, the Foggers and the PPE and all the things that we use that money for, extra nurses, all of that went to very, very good use. So why am I saying all this? Well, we're told that in the coming school year, we are going to get what's now called Esser two. And the money is is good. It's two point three million dollars that our district will be getting as a, you know, pass through. So it's not general fund money. It must be used for the same purposes, but it's broken down this way. There's general two point one million dollars to be used for more health and safety types of issues. I've already had a conversation with our architect about what we can do in HVAC land for with that money. There is about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for learning acceleration. And I know Dr. Clark is very excited about creating and putting into practice a very robust summer learning academy with those funds. And then there's forty-five thousand dollars for mental health services, which helps the business administrator get through the next budget process. I'm just kidding. That's just to see if you're listening. That's all. So any questions on the revenue side of the equation before I move on to appropriations?
All right.
I do. Is our budget gap in a tiny bit bitter better shape now than it was last week? So to speak.
Well, the ending misses the sense of you're gonna, I'll reveal the whodunit at the end, okay?
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was a murder mystery. Okay.
Thank you. Patrick, can you can you tell me what was the amount for the health and safety for Esser two?
Forty-five thousand dollars.
Forty-five thousand. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that really is, all kidding aside, so important for us because our students really have had a lot to deal with. And that funding really is going to come in very handy to provide services that that they need to kind of cope to what happened and what what's about to happen. So appropriations, again, appropriations is our spending.
Excuse me, one second.
Mr. Clean.
I'm sorry. Just to go back, so that forty-five thousand dollars for mental health issues that in Esser two, is that a cap we have to stop at forty-five or can we use some of the other monies if we deem necessary to go over to forty-five?
Right. Federal money, more than any kind of money, comes with all kinds of rules. As I understand it now, it can only be used up to forty-five thousand dollars. However, I said the same thing when we got Esser one, that we can only use it for a certain amount of things. And then the digital divide grant came out and then we wound up reallocating different things. So as of this moment in time, we have forty-five thousand dollar ceiling. But I would argue that if we needed more, that we would make the case for more.
And all this money is used or lose it, correct? So at the end of the year, if we haven't capitalized on using it, the government takes it back, right?
Yes, sir. That is absolutely. So the the spending plan now, it's a seventy-two million dollars worth of spending. So we're going to deal with what I would call big ticket type items. So before we do, I'm going to make a general comment about COVID nineteen right now. It has thrown a huge monkey wrench into budgeting, almost every category of appropriation. So I'll give you an example. The period from March twenty twenty through the present time is almost of no use in predicting the future because it fails to present us with a reliable forecastable trend. So I rely more on the period a year before March ninth, twenty nineteen through December twenty twenty, making a good deal of projections. And I'll explain when we go through them, what ones I'm specifically talking about more than than another. So of the appropriations, salaries and benefits continues to take about eighty percent of a district spending plan. So let's talk about compensation. The current general fund budget for compensation. Now, that's what we have in our current twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget for compensation is forty-one point eight million dollars. So it's 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 a big number. We have eight hundred people who work in our district. And it just as a large, large employer in the area, you would expect to see something like that. Now, as we mentioned in the previous conversation about negotiations, we are square in the middle of that. So I really can't, I don't have any information to share as to where we as a district budgetarily go from that base level onward. I just do not have any information about the future of compensation that I can share at this time. But we will, you know, as as the budgets progress from tentative to final, we're going to share what we can, right? Without violating the aforementioned rules of engagement in negotiations. What about health benefits? The current general fund budget for health benefits, which is medical, prescription and dental, net of the employee compensa contributions is over thirteen point two million dollars, right? So the medical component, our district participates participates in what's called the State Employees Health Benefits Plan or the SE HBP with something called New Jersey Direct fifteen, serving as the base plan for for our employees. Effective this past January first, in the open enrollment process, some of our employees enrolled in a new plan called the Employer's Health Plan or the EHP. Where am I going with this? After two consecutive years in which premiums decreased, right? The cost of of monthly premiums decreased two years in a row, which in my long career has never ever happened. Not even once, actually. Projecting the direction of premiums come January one, twenty twenty-two is difficult. However, for a variety of reasons, the smart money in the room tells us that premiums will almost assuredly increase. And we think at this point by a wide margin. Prescription. The district participates in the private Benicar Trust Plan for employees enrolled in the SE HBP or the state plan. Employees enrolled in the other, the EHP, they must take the prescription plan that is part of that EHP plan. Now, we noted that if you're paying attention to board agendas in the in the recent past, you saw that the district was able to secure a zero percent increase in the premiums for the trust plan, the private plan. Now, remains to be seen what happens to the component within the EHP. But again, you know, the smart money says what it says. Employee contributions. There are two laws which govern the process whereby public employees contribute a portion of the cost of the medical and prescription plans. One is called chapter seventy-eight. It's been around for a while and it is based on a percentage of the premium. The other is fairly recent and called chapter forty-four, which is based on a percentage of the pensionable compensation of the employee. Chapter forty-four, and this is not a commentary, you know, has made projecting employee contributions fairly difficult. One, because it's so new. And two, because it doesn't necessarily wind up in in a higher contribution than in the previous chapter seventy-eight. As it writes, stands right now, it appears to me that this chapter forty-four is a is a loser for the district in that the amount of contributions are decreasing at a faster rate than the premium decrease. So right now, it's going to cost us as a district net more and more as as time goes on. Dental, finally. As noted in board agendas, again, the district was able to secure a two percent, two-year increase in dental premiums. So for one thing, it makes projecting dental benefits at least a little bit easier. Any questions on any of these benefits so far?
I I have a question.
Sure.
Chapter forty-four, does that supersede those that fell in chapter seventy-eight?
So chapter forty-four relates to anyone who is in the employee, the new employer health plan. They must contribute in accordance with chapter forty-four, which is a percentage of the salary. Anyone who is in the original SE HBP, they are still governed by chapter seventy-eight and contribute a portion of the premium based upon a sliding scale. So the two are mutually exclusive and dependent directly on which of the health plans that an employee is in.
And that's chosen during open enrollment?
Yes, sir, it is. And with one notable exception, if any new employee to our district, with very few exceptions, is obligated to take the new EHP. They're not able to take the SE HBP and they must take that for seven years. That's the rule. I mean, there's always an exception to everything, but that's the general rule.
Okay, thank you.
Well, sure. Thanks for the question.
Pat, can I jump in just for a minute?
Oh, yeah, sure, Kathy.
No, it's just listening to you talk about chapter forty-four. I don't know if your board is aware that there is a resolution that's on the website that deals specifically with chapter forty-four and the additional costs that a district may incur, that your board may want to look at that and pass it. Send it to your legislators and also send the resolution to us at New Jersey School Boards because our Labor Relations Department is taking count of the districts who are passing that resolution. And they are actually talking to the legislators also.
Right. I appreciate that. I did, in fact, see that I'm not, for one overarching reason, in a position to recommend that our board adopt that resolution yet. I need a little bit more data on how it really impacts us. But yes, I will certainly share that through committee. At the same time, I was a little disappointed that there was in the address for the budget, there was no mention really of any kind of movement on forty-four. But I gotta understand that it's very new and it needs a little bit of time to work itself out because it impacts different districts in different ways. But I appreciate your point. So let's talk about pensions, right? So probably all know this already, but there are basically three types. There's the teachers' pension and annuity fund or TPAF or TPATH. And that's the pension system for certificate staff, most notably teachers. So in the past, at least up through now, the state of New Jersey pays every district share of its pension obligation for TPATH members. So what kind of money are we talking? So in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty audit, that amount that the state is paying on our behalf, five point eight million dollars, it's a lot of money, right? That if if the state didn't pay it, we would have to pay that employer portion, but the state is paying that on our behalf. The second is the public employees' retirement system or PERS. And that's the pension system for non-certificated staff. Now, majority of non-certificated staff participate in this and the district remains obligated to pay the employer portion. For the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year that we are in right now, that obligation is one point one million dollars. For next year, we think that obligation is going to be just a little bit lower at a million, twenty-two thousand dollars. And I shared that calculation with the Finance and Operations Committee members. And I will also share it with you. But as at this point, and it could change, that's that's our number. The third and final pension, so so budgetarily, this pension does cost us a million plus. The DCRP or the Defined Contribution Retirement Program, that was created back in two thousand and seven. Explaining what DCRP is, it's not easy. But simply understood, it's a pension system for non-certificated employees who don't qualify for PERS, right? Or can't get into PERS. So as the same with PERS, the district has an obligation to pay its employer portion. For this year, our employer portion was ninety thousand dollars. For next year, we anticipate that our obligation will be ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So a very significant portion of our budget, almost one point two million dollars is goes to pay employer share on pension and there's not an option on that.
Pat?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to give an example of someone who is not eligible to get into public employees' pension?
Sure. One would be a part-time person who doesn't work enough hours, who less works less than thirty hours, who doesn't make fifteen thousand dollars a year. Those are the people who must enter DC. Those are the people who must enter DCRP pension as opposed to the PERS pension. It really largely depends on hours and money.
I have a question. Are you done, Frank? I'm sorry.
Yes, Sam. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, the state pays for the teachers' pension, but we pay for the other two?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. There was talk three years ago that the state was gonna stop that.
Right.
That would be cataclysmic is at best, but right now, if I had to choose between five point eight and one point two, well, you know, I take the, the smaller.
Right, okay.
So, let's talk about the next step after pension, right? When people retire, we have an obligation, what we call terminal leave. It's a strange name, right? Sounds, doesn't sound good, but it's, it's really the amount of unused, earned but unused vacation and perhaps sick time, which by contract and by law, the district owes to employees who retire. Frame of reference. For the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year that we're in, our budget for terminal leave is five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We project that next year, at this point in time, and we put some contractual components in place to give us a line of demarcation, and we've passed that. So, it looks like it'll be about five, ten next year, a little bit less. And you might ask, why is that? Because from two thousand and seven before, there was no cap on sick days earned but to be paid. At a certain point in time, the law said that no matter how many sick days you have, if you started after that time period of the law, your cap is fifteen thousand dollars. So, as the pre-cap law, employees retire, and the other ones then follow suit, you can see that at some point in time, the obligation is gonna be less and less.
Pat, do we pay, do we pay medical benefits when they retire? Is that part of the pension?
We do not. That's, that's, that's between the retiree and the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
All right, um, it, you know, we had a couple of questions. If there are no more questions on the pension and terminal leave, then I'm just gonna touch on a few other things. One is property and casualty insurance. Our district continues its membership in a joint insurance fund, or JIF, named the Monmouth Ocean County Shared Services Insurance Fund, or MOCF, as we call it. Now, there are pretty standard components of what we call PNC insurance. General liability, legal liability, what if the board gets itself in legal trouble? Errors in admission, what happens if one of our employees who has a certification makes a mistake? That covers them. We have our property insured, we have environmental coverage, we have coverage on the boilers and all of the machinery on our auto and buses, and then, of course, workers' compensation. So, I shared with you notes that I have on property and casualty insurance so far. And you can see for the current school year, and this is, again, a big amount of money. Our, we're paying PNC at one point three million. And we project right now that our, our next year obligation will be slightly more at one point four million. I, I have to say that, and, and you know, because I've said this in notes before, one point four million is a pretty good estimate. However, the insurance broker that we have is shopping us within the JIF and outside the JIF for all of these components. Since the last time we spoke about this, our workers' compensation metrics have improved even more. They're very good to begin with. We have a very good safety program here. Our employees do a very good job. Things do happen, unfortunately, but we put a good amount of safety measures in place in the past few years. So, I think that that number is gonna decrease a little bit from what you're looking at right now, about six hundred forty thousand right now. I think it's gonna decrease, but in the next few weeks, I'll know for sure, but I'm kinda hopeful that what you're looking at, one point four, will be no less than one point three, or maybe even a little bit lower. Make sense? All right. So, I also gave you notes on utilities, so. Call me crazy, but I actually created these spreadsheets that I gave to you, and I've tracked them ever since way back in twenty sixteen, and they really help with the notable exception of I really can't use much of what I'm looking at from last March to this December, as far as consumption goes. But after all is said and done, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars a year that we spend on gas, electric, and water. And it's, it's a good chunk of change. So, as I said, projecting the future is a little bit tricky. And it includes variables such as historic consumption, which, again, I refer to non-pandemic or pre-pandemic years. The price of the commodity, which is a very real market concern, including the cost to deliver it to us, which is a part of it. And the impact, the impact of the general market, right, not just here in the United States of America, but abroad. It all has a, a part to play in what we project, and then including the weather. So, at the end of the day, after looking at these font-size-three numbers that you're looking at, and hoping we get back to what I'll dare say is a normal cycle next year, I think, I mean, we're budgeting right now about eleven percent, eleven percent decrease for a number of reasons, and part of that reason is, and we talked about this at our Finance and Operations Committee last month. We've done a pretty good job as a district getting ourselves at the smaller schools into what's called the Direct Install Program, run by the state Energy Conservation folks, and it has caused us to be able to put in, at a very, very cheap price, energy-efficient lighting, energy-efficient electrical devices in the four schools, and that helps drive down the consumption of energy. So, we're doing everything we can, and again, at this point, we're projecting about eleven percent decrease. So, I just wanna talk about a couple of other things, and then, and then I'm, I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Clark. Instructional supplies. As of right now, the budget for instructional supplies, and that includes everything that's used by teachers in classrooms, is about two hundred and ninety-five thousand or twenty-three percent lower than the current year. Why is that? Well, one reason, this is, if there was, and, and I know Mr. Polino and I had a conversation about this last spring. We ordered things last year that we didn't use all of, and it has, it had no impact on the current budget, but it does have an impact on the budget that we're building right now for next year. That, in addition to working with principals who really care, believe me. I haven't met principals who care as much about their kids and their staff, and what their staff has as far as tools go, than the six principals that we have. So, thanks to them for caring so much. But in our numerous conversations, we've been able to, to do that, and then, of course, we were able to use some of the excess surplus from a couple of years ago to purchase some of the curriculum items that we would have to have put in instructional supplies, but we don't. Finally, legal expenses. That's the final big-ticket item. So, at ninety-one thousand dollars, this twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget build is thirty-nine thousand dollars or thirty percent lower than the current year. Why? A lot of it has to do with the, how the cases that we are working on fall budgetarily, but that's what we're looking at. I mean, there are three components to it. There's the, the labor attorney, the special ed attorney, and our, our board attorney. And after a conversation with them about the current caseload and what is reasonably foreseeable in the future, we're able to come to you and say that we're, we're gonna budget thirty percent lower for legal costs. And I will, again, commend our attorneys for providing excellent service. All right. So, that's enough for tonight, for our very first budget workshop. I appreciate that. The goal really is to have one other at some point between the March eighteenth adoption of the Tenet of Budget and the May fifth or sixth adoption of the final budget, and, you know, we'll update on some of the topics we spoke about this evening, and we'll add some other things that we didn't get a chance to cover in tonight's. So, so here's Mr. DeSens's answer to your question. What does this all mean? As I sit here right now, our deficit is about one point two million dollars. That means that we, our spending plan is one point two million dollars bigger than the amount of money we're projecting that we're gonna get to fund that spending plan. So, what do we do now, right? And you've heard me say this every year. We are going to discuss as a group of intelligent, well-meaning, student-focused board members and administrators to find ways to generate more revenue, and, and not the least of which is us knocking some heads together in Trenton or above to try to listen to our compelling case for why we need more state aid, and then finding ways, sometimes painful ways, to reduce our spending plan. Either way, the law says that we have to have a balanced budget on March eighteenth, and we will. So, more to come, certainly between Dr. Clark and myself and the members of the board through committees and through notes. But Dr. Clark, that is all that I have.
Hi, thank you so much, Mr. George. That was thorough and comprehensive. And I'm just going to end with thanking everybody for participating in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Lacey Township School District Board Retreat. And Mr. Lidle, I'm going to turn it back over to you to share this evening's agenda. And before I turn it back over to Mr. Polino, I just wanted to take this opportunity, following our February eighteenth board meeting, to, of course, thank our entire school community, but especially our teachers for all of their hard work in getting us this far. Our administrators have been amazing as well. Our facilities and grounds and maintenance crews have been amazing. And as Mr. Decker mentioned earlier, we are about to transition to our expansion for our students to attend school five days a week. But that has always been a collaborative effort with our Board of Education. And Kathy, you talked about that extensively, about how important that collaboration is. But the collaboration also with our families, our teachers, and our administrators is truly what has gotten us here. So, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. Kathy, I wanna thank you tonight for your presentation. It was very thorough. Mr. Decker, I wanna thank you as well, and of course, Mr. DeGeorge, thank you again for that very lengthy presentation, but very informative. All right, Mr. Polino, back over to you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Clark. So, at this point in the agenda, we have public comment, and I'm just gonna say that those that are making comments like we do at our other meetings, limited to five minutes or there so, and to the agenda items. So, at this time, Mr. Lidle, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I assume you only have two attendees at this present time, but if they have any questions.
Yes, anyone who would like to comment at this time is instructed to virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app or dial star nine if you are calling in via telephone. You will be called to unmute your microphone and speak in turn. I saw a hand there for a moment. It was that, uh, I'm assuming that was a mistake, because the hand disappeared. So, seeing none. Oh, it's back up. Hold on one moment. Mr. Rizzoli, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address and begin your public comment.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for putting this on public, out to the public for view. The presentation was very good. It gave us the public a better understanding of the roles of each individual member of the Board of Education and what you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to do, which is always informative. Thank you very much to Mr. DeGeorge for giving me more ammunition to bring forward in the future on things that I don't like, that I didn't like hearing at all, especially when it comes to raising taxes. With the reduction in the amount of students we have going down and, and, you know, the, the price of living in Lacey Township going up, especially on people, for people with fixed income, we'll be having more discussion in reference to that in the future. But it's time for the Board of Education, again, sharpen your pencils. Look hard into what you can do and what you can't do. Yes, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be painful, as was said by Mr. DeGeorge, but it's also going to be necessary from my point of view. Yes, there are many parents who do have children in the school system who have much different views. But there are many taxpayers in the township who do not have children in the school systems that are being very negatively affected by over sixty-six percent of our tax dollars going to the school district. So, you're all taxpayers. You know where I'm coming from. Look at it hard, look at it difficult, and if it means that the, that the union has to bite the bullet and show performance for what they're worth, then maybe it's gotta be performance and payment based on performance. I don't see anywhere where they're evaluated on performance at all. According to the state, and what I see in the newspapers, we're somewhat mediocre. I don't like Lacey being evaluated or told it's mediocre in the middle of the pack. I don't like to pay for that. Thank you very much for your time. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzoli. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, Mish, Miss Behujian, please unmute. I'm sorry. I'd have to, not used to doing this alone. Here we go. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
She's still there?
Yeah, I think she's, she muted herself by accident.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go.
I was just wondering if we can get a copy of Mr. DeGeorge's notes from his presentation this evening? Since they weren't on the presentation, he just spoke. Usually, he does a nice graph or a chart.
Yeah, that's, there are no slide deck. There's just my personal notes that I shared with the board in public. So, no, there really is not an attachment or anything that I'm able to share at this time, but there'll be plenty to see in a few weeks when we, when we talk about queuing up the Tenet of Budget.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Lynn?
It looks like there is no one else. Last call, and it does not look like there are anyone else.
Mr. Polino, can I also add that at three o'clock this afternoon, we received no comments via the Google platform that we instituted a few months ago. So, that does, in fact, conclude- So that does in fact conclude public comment.
I was just going to ask you that. Mr. George, thank you. So at this time, we're going to close public comment. We're going to go to board comments. We're going to start with Ms. The Senza.
Thank you, Frank. I do have a couple of quest, well, question and a comment. Um, how are we notifying parents of virtual non-attendance? For example, if a student's cutting class, especially in the high school, do we have a system in place that if a student doesn't sign on, how does the parent get notified?
Right, so that's a great question, Senza. And of course, it varies by grade. So at the high school, the teachers, actually, I shouldn't say it varies by grade. It's really coming from the teachers because teachers are the ones who are managing Google Classroom, Canvas. And there is a lot of outreach for those students who aren't logging on. I know our principals and our supervisors are doing many, many home visits as are our guidance counselors. So when I, I probably should say it varies by school because each principal's handling it a little bit different.
All right, because the only thing I'm wondering is like at seven o'clock in the morning, the high school kids can sign on, but maybe they fall back to sleep. Does anyone notice if they're not in front of their camera or if they turn their camera off?
Oh, absolutely. Attendance is taken. There is no doubt about that.
Okay, and then I have a comment about long-range facilities. Let me just get to it. When we do our long-range facilities plan in just eight years, the solar panels will be in, will be at the end of their projected useful life. So I'd like to suggest a footnote for the next long-range facilities plan because if the panels don't continue to produce at the same rate, the electric bill will rise. And we just discussed the utilities and that would need to be accounted for in future budgets.
Right, yes, but, but I think a little further in my professional opinion than that because as I keep saying, I'm really happy to be able to say it that the solar system costs us less and less and continues for some unknown reason to outperform the original specification. So at this point, considering its age, we really can't be anything but pleased. But yes, your point is well-taken. And districts such as ours who did the same thing at the same time are in the process of thinking, but I don't think it's within the next five years. I think that we're in pretty good shape.
Well, we have eight years left and the maximum projection, I think, was thirty years.
Yeah. Call me then.
That's okay. I'm done, Mr. Polino. Thank you.
Okay, I was just gonna thank you, Mr. Senza. Mrs. Downing, would you like to go next? You have to, there you go. Okay.
I, I just want to again thank Kathy for her presentation today. And Steve, Vanessa and Patrick, all four of you presented very detailed presentations and I thought it was very well done. Thank you. That's it, Frank.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Mr. Scanlon, do you have any comments?
Just very briefly, I'd like to, I'd most like to thank Kathy, Steve, Patrick and Vanessa for their comments. For Patrick especially, well, not especially, but also for carrying through on, on starting that budget workshop so the public can see what we're up against. Also, just like take a moment to remind Mr. Rizzoli that as board members, we're all members and we're all taxpayers of Lacey Township. And if we have to raise the taxes an average of six dollars per month, it won't be done frivolously. The other thing I just like to remind people too is that the senior citizens on fixed incomes who might be struggling are eligible for the tax freeze. And they, they should be part of that program and it would not be affecting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Peters? You're up. We're not hearing you. At least I'm not. Now, you're unmuted, but we're not getting anybody else hearing him?
No audio.
I'm sorry, we're not hearing you. All right, you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna, I'll come back to you and see if maybe if you could do something with your computer, we'll come back and try again.
Call in. Ask them to call in.
Yeah, Mr. Peters, Mr. Senza said, if you want to call. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna.
Don't come and go. I think he tried going out. Maybe he's going to come back in. Let's see if we can get audio.
All right, Ms. Claus, you want to, you want to go?
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to say the presentation was excellent. Dr. Clark and Mr. Decker, I feel like we're, we hit a lot of our goals and the other goals are on their way of being met shortly, which is great. And Kathy, I wanted to thank you. I, you're very informative. It was a great presentation. You cleared up a lot of questions that I had. And moving forward, I'll do my best to, you know, take your advice. I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, Mr. George, we're going to have to meet so much information. If you don't mind, just putting a little time aside for me, but you did a great presentation and I feel like I have a good handle on it, but I know there's more, obviously more training to be had. So if you wouldn't mind.
And you could suggest paint colors and then you can also.
We know there's certain Pantones for that, for sure. But I, I don't know if anybody would agree or if we thought about possibly to close the gap, hiring maybe a grant writer or just something to help us or if we have someone that writes grants. I don't know if we need someone full-time or I don't know if we have someone on board already that can participate in that. And then what about the Education Foundation? Is that no more? Where is that now?
There's a little bit of a oops going on with that. I got some mail the other day, but I'm not at liberty to discuss it at this moment. Okay. It's, it's kind of in the wind.
Because I'm wondering if we can apply for grants through the Education Foundation. I don't know if, if we can do that, but.
We could, but it's not in a good state at this moment, unfortunately.
So can we, can we work on that maybe just to get that started again?
It's, it's in a bad way. I just found out two days ago.
And Ken, that wouldn't be up to board members.
No, we can't do anything about it.
We can't do anything about it.
Our hands are tied.
Yep.
Literally.
Okay, so well, then maybe we can look into a grant writer if anybody's interested in that. And that's it, I guess. But I appreciate all the, all the information we got tonight. It was very helpful. Thank you for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Peters? My back, can you hear me? Yes, we got you. All right, thank you. I left the meeting, came back. Thank you so much. So I have a couple of questions. The status of our Chromebooks that we ordered a while ago, have they been distributed yet?
So I'm thinking, Mr. Peters, you're talking about the Chromebooks for the elementary students. No, they have not been distributed. But they have arrived. So I know the last time I spoke with Mr. England about that, it was the end of February. So it's the end of February. So I anticipate that it's going to be very, very soon.
Yeah, I remember ex-president, Ms. Downing commenting in December that they, we, they arrived, that they were going out to a place in Cherry Hill to be programmed. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a white glove service that we have and that's where they're unboxed. And so yeah, I'll check status on that tomorrow.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Also, what, it's a touchy subject and I saw that report today. What, what are we doing about trying to bring the middle school grades up? Everything was in a positive, 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 except that it seems like the middle school, the sixth and seventh graders there. Are we doing something extra, Mr. Decker, to try and intervene with them to get those scores up?
Well, yes, I mean, we're, we're targeting those grades, especially in mathematics. That's, that's where the scores were a little bit lower in math. And again, they were only lower from the norm by a couple of percentage points, which really isn't statistically significant.
Yeah, you know, you, you said, I'm sorry to interrupt. You said that a few times, but
Yeah.
Seven points, you're using seven points as a scales where it was, you know, negative or not. And I, and I regret saying middle school was more like Milpon into middle school seemed like where we were, we were struggling a little bit there.
Yeah, but it wasn't more, it was probably like two points or three points. It wasn't, it wasn't a huge number, but regardless of that, it's an area that we continue to focus on. And if you, if you recall from last year, our math scores in the middle school did increase from last year's presentation. We, in, on the NJ SLA, we did increase in our math scores in the, in the middle school, which is a good thing. But we're always continually focusing on trying to make it better.
And one more thing, Mr. George, I'm going on two and a half years being on this board. And it seems every year we're getting beat up by the state. I had a chance today to listen to our lovely governor speak and he spoke that two-thirds of the schools would be getting money and it seems like, again, we got cut short. Why is that? I know we're involved in a lawsuit, number one. Number two, also, Ms. Claus, when I spoke earlier today about, you know, the grant writing and there's twenty-eight million dollars out there for a preschool program, you know, that, that can be applied to us. I watched that entirely speech today of the governor. What are our intentions of trying to grab some of that money?
We try to grab, and I'll need a little bit of help on the instructional side from either Steve or Dr. Clark. But specific to preschool, we've applied every year. And the unfunded cost has exceeded the money that we would get. Right? So we, for every dollar we got, we'd have to spend a dollar and a quarter. So although you might get money, at, at, at least up till now, and we had everybody in the room, right? We had everybody in the room to talk about that. And although I'm the business guy, you'll never find a bigger proponent of the value of preschool education than, than me, because I married that. So try every year to to grab every dollar we can, but sometimes it just costs us more to get it. And so far, it hasn't been something that would pan out.
I just feel that the state's giving us less and less and less. And our cost of everything from insurance to, to facilities, to upgrades, to this, to that, is just going up, but we keep on getting less money every year. And I know you have no control over that. So I guess, you know, reach, reach out to your political officials in town and see, you know, the public and see what you can do to help us out. We could, we could really use it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to add to that. Let me go back to the preschool. So that's right, we, we've had several meetings. The problem is, is that there are monies out there for us to implement a, to expand, I should say, our preschool program. However, we don't have the space. And when the preschool expansion monies first became available, districts were putting kids in trailers. They were just ordering up trailers and plopping them on property and running preschool programs in those. The problem is, is that they have since disallowed districts to do, from doing that. That's even disallowed. That'll work? I think that's work. And so it's not permissible anymore. And so when we met and we sat down to, you know, and Pat's right, we had everybody in the room, how are we going to expand our preschool? You know, we have to build on to one of our schools, Milpon, which is where we have the space because we have to put in bathrooms and classrooms and furniture. And the amount of grant monies that were available far exceeded the monies that we were going to need in the end. In fact, and not that I want, I'm not going to name the district, but a district in Ocean County applied for the grant, was awarded the grant. And then when they started to put their plan together, they realized they were short money and they had to pull back and give the money back that they were given and they were, it was frowned upon. And we certainly did not want to get ourselves in that position where we applied for the grant only to realize that it wasn't enough money, that the grant monies weren't enough. The expectation is that we're given the grant money, but then the district has to come up with a certain amount of money to make up for the deficit. We didn't have it. And so when we start meeting, you know, you know, we would have been doing that already if not for the pandemic. But when we start meeting to talk about redistricting, that's when we're going to start to have conversations about how is it that we need to redistrict in Lacey? How do we need to reconfigure our buildings to bring in more preschoolers? And what steps do we need to take to make up that deficit? So that's, that's, and we've talked about this a couple of times a while back in, in some, in several finance meetings. The preschool grant monies keep coming around. They keep making their way around. But we keep finding ourselves in the same situation. So we're going to have to make some changes. And that's why we're going to be meeting very soon with our ad hoc, our redistricting ad hoc committee. What was the second part of that when you asked me? Or asked us, there was, I was going to go somewhere else in a different direction. I forgot.
I just mentioned how we get, I feel that, well, you see, we get beat up all the time when the money comes out. That's all.
Yeah.
Trying to reach out to your.
Oh, you just reminded me, right. So, um, yes, so Pat mentioned earlier that he and I did meet with Senator Connors and Township Committeeman McDonald. And we are preparing a letter to send to the governor, to the Department of Education, much like we did, like we have year after year. In addition to that, Pat mentioned an organization called SOS, which stands for Save Our Schools. And just recently, one of the assistants reached out. They're putting together a, an initiative and they asked for a board member's name. So I submitted Donna's name and she's going to be working with them and our PTAs to fight this fight and, and, you know, continue to make some noise about the fact that, yeah, year after year, they're taking money from us. That's not the way it is across the state. There are some districts that are getting money. And so, you know, we're, we're probably going to meet with Senator Connors again. We're going to be sending that letter out very soon. We want to make sure that the full board gets a chance to see that letter. But we're going to be working on it in the next few days.
One more quick question. Where are we at with that lawsuit regarding the formula of how the schools get the money?
So Pat, do you have an update on that?
Sure, yeah. We got the formula, but it's, it's, it's unknowable to anybody who is reasonably intelligent. So the, the group, our litigation group really has to engage a forensic accountant, but it, we went over the issue of the formula with Senator Connors and, and the group that day we met with them. And if certain components of it were changed to favor us and districts like us, then we would actually be getting more aid. And unfortunately, we're on the wrong end of the metrics they use. And they don't seem to be anything other than arbitrary. That's the problem. And as long as they continue to use those arbitrary metrics, we will continue to be on the wrong side of it because we are not the kind of district that they think would get more money. And I strongly disagree for a whole host of reasons and so does Dr. Clark. And we're going to keep fighting the fight. It's just that, it's just too much. It's just too much.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Polino. I'd just like to thank all presenters. They did an awesome job tonight. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Ms. McAvoy?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to everyone. Kathy, thank you very much. You were very informative. And I'm sure everyone here learned something. Everyone, thank you. something, everyone. Thank you. Steve and Vanessa, thank you very much. Great presentations. Mr. Scanlon, thank you for being the finance chair and suggesting this budget workshop tonight. We all learned something. And like Mrs. Claus said, I still don't understand everything either. There's so much information. It's, it's overwhelming, but you really, you really helped a lot tonight. And Skip and Kim, the grant writer is a great idea. I know we brought it up a few years ago. And we were laying off teachers or cafeteria or Paris, I forget whom, and we just couldn't justify it. So I guess we have to decide if we want to pay out for a grant writer and possibly at a lot of income. I mean, that we have to weigh the decision, what would help the district better, but it's always a good discussion to have with everyone. And Mr. Pleno, thank you for helping me out tonight. I appreciate it. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Feel better. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna wrap this up and keep it brief. Yeah, thank you to our presenters tonight. You know, it was very informative. Learned a couple of things, even though, you know, I've been on the board a little bit. You know, Ms. White, I really liked the, the comment that you said in your presentation about the board meeting. It's just a meeting that's, it's, it's a board business meeting held in the public. And it's not a public per se meeting. And I, and I really like that. And then how the communication should be, you know, the two-way communication is really for a different venue, not for our board business meeting. So that's something that we should, we should look into. Again, thank you all for participating tonight. I have nothing else. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
And I'm gonna say good night, everybody.
All right, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Good luck with the reopening of school.
Thanks. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, motion was by Mr. Peter's second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Downing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks. Stay well. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.